It's now seven o'clock and I'm reconvening to open session, calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, July 8th, 2019. Jeanie, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carrubus.
Here.
Mr. Razak.
Here.
Ms. Peel.
Here.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
Ms. Demming.
Present.
Ms. Grover.
Here.
And Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Everyone's here, so we have a quorum. Ms. Grover, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Being that it's July and almost everyone's on vacation, we have no public comment. Actually, we don't have a board salute either, so it's kind of, we're in down times in District 204. I'm sure we're going to crank up very soon. So, we move right to our superintendent report. Dr. Sullivan.
Okay, so we are in July.
You're good.
But it's always amusing to me that everyone assumes that everyone in the district has the summer off. So, the summer really is high season for many of our departments. Our buildings and grounds people are extremely busy with projects, right, Todd?
Yes, we are.
Yes, you are. Our tech people have a ton of work going on, right, tech people? Yes, you do. And our teachers and our curriculum leaders and building leaders are all working on all kinds of curriculum and individual student programming projects to get us ready for the upcoming school year. So, I know that because I can't find a parking space at the CEC when I come in in the morning, so it's most days. So, there's a lot of folks coming in to get training. The Indian Prairie Educational Foundation is excited to share that they have launched a 204 alumni initiative that will serve as a direct connection between 204 graduates and the foundation. The goal is to provide alumni with updates about IPEF and how the foundation's partnership with the district provides programs to our students while making a meaningful impact. So, along with a newsletter that I think those on the board received, that's provided to members of the alumni database, several 204 alumni events will be scheduled throughout the year. And their first alumni event will take place on Sunday, July 21st, from 1:00 to 4:00 at Top Golf. And as a guest at the event, the alumni will enjoy a fun afternoon of networking, reconnecting, reminiscing, and I'm sure some golf. So, for more information or to RSVP for the event, or if you can't make it to the event on the 21st but would like to be added to the database, contact Alicia Johnson, the Executive Director of the Foundation, and I know more information will be up on the website. And finally, this Friday, if you have nothing to do Friday morning, July 12th, the WGN Morning Show is going to host a parade and a block party in downtown Naperville. District 204 students will be participating in the parade, which steps off at 9:00 a.m. from Nichols Library. In addition, WGN will be broadcasting live from 6:00 to 10:00 a.m. from downtown Naperville. And we invite everyone to come out and share in the fun as we welcome WGN to Naperville. Okay? Onto our administrative hires. You good with that?
I'm good.
All right. Okay. So, we're excited to introduce and recommend a number of new administrators to join our district team. Unfortunately, not everyone were able to make it to the meeting tonight, but we will welcome them enthusiastically anyway. But we do have one who's here, and we're going to start with you, Adam, okay? First, we have our Assistant Principal for Crone Middle School, Adam Chorba. Adam comes to us from District 158 in Algonquin, where he served as a middle school assistant principal and athletic director. His previous experience was in Maryville, Indiana, where he was a middle school teacher, dean, and interim assistant principal. So, we are really excited to welcome Adam to the Indian Prairie family, and I respectfully ask you to approve Adam Chorba as Assistant Principal at Crone Middle School.
So, I do need a motion that the Board of Education approve Adam as Assistant Principal at Crone Middle School.
I move that the Board of Education approve Adam Chorba as Assistant Principal at Crone Middle School as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jeanie, please call the roll.
Mr. Carrubus.
Yes.
Mr. Razak.
Aye.
Ms. Peel.
Aye.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Adam.
Thanks for being our only audience member today.
You are our only audience member, and thank Melissa for coming.
Thanks, welcome.
Welcome. We're excited to have you. Now, as Melissa knows, you don't have to stay for the entire meeting. She'll ease you out as we move on. So, next we have the Athletic Director at Matia Valley, and we're excited to bring forward one of our own, Matthew Furman. Matthew came to Indian Prairie in 1999 as a dean's assistant. He moved on to teach physical education at Still Middle School, then Nequa Valley for 10 years until moving over to Matia Valley in 2012. So, Matthew has a long resume of coaching and activity leadership opportunities, so I respectfully ask you to approve Matthew Furman as Athletic Director for Matia Valley High School.
I'm excited to make the motion, the Board of Education approve Matthew Furman as Athletic Director of Matia Valley High School as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jeanie, please call the roll.
Mr. Carrubus.
She always starts with me.
She's always first on the list.
Yes.
Mr. Razak.
Aye.
Ms. Peel.
Aye.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
And motion passes. Congratulations. Matthew.
Congratulations, Matthew, wherever you are. Okay, we'll move on. And finally, we have the Executive Director of Educational Equity position, and we are thrilled to bring forward Jennifer Rowe. Jen came to Indian Prairie in 2005 to teach at Wabonzi Valley. She moved into the dean position at Matia in 2008, and she has led numerous equity initiatives at Matia, several of which have become district-wide programs. And we believe Jen can help take this position to a new level, and we can't wait to see what she can do. So, I respectfully ask you to approve Jennifer Rowe as the Executive Director for Educational Equity.
I move...
Go ahead.
I move that we approve Jennifer Rowe as our Executive Director for Educational Equity.
There's a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jeanie, call the roll.
Mr. Carrubus.
Yes.
Mr. Razak.
Aye.
Ms. Peel.
Aye.
Mr. Rising.
Aye.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
And motion passes. Welcome, Jennifer, wherever you are.
Jennifer's in New Orleans. Welcome, Jennifer.
Hello, guys.
Great.
I'm done.
Okay. And so, we move to our consent agenda items. I need a motion that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items G through K as presented.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items G through K.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jeanie, call the roll.
Mr. Carrubus.
Yes.
Mr. Razak.
Aye.
Ms. Peel.
Aye.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Motion passes. We're now going to our action items, and that's the approval of the Gifts and Donations Report, second semester. I do need a motion to approve the Gift and Donations Report.
I move that the Board of Education approve the Gifts and Donation Report, second semester 2018-2019 as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Dr. Lee.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Sullivan, we recommend that the Board of Education approve the Gifts and Donations Report for the second semester and year-end of the 2018-2019 school year. We're incredibly fortunate to have such a bless-giving community. This year's total donations far exceeded, at one point, just almost $1.6 million for the second semester alone, just over $1 million in total donations. Many of those dollars reflect, just again, generosity of our community, the hard work and dedication of our foundation, members of our PTA boards, and just general citizens in this community. At this time, be more than happy to take any additional questions or entertain any comments.
Any questions or comments?
We have a very generous community.
Extremely generous. Yeah, and I guess that, since there's not a lot of questions or comments, I guess I want to reiterate that. Our community is extremely generous. And over the course of years, we, the foundation, our PTAs, even the general community, the medical community.
Boosters.
Boosters and citizens. But what I really have noticed over the course of the last several years is that our givers are reaching beyond just the traditional giving. We have students who are in need, and families who, for whatever reason, might be going through a hard time. And the last several years, we have really seen effort to try to make sure that we address some of those needs, because it's hard to learn, and it's hard to do your best when you might be hungry, or you need to cope, or you need to celebrate a holiday. And I really want, I thank everyone. I really want to just take time to thank those who were doing some untraditional giving that really helps our entire community, and I think it benefits our school district. And I just want to say thanks.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? Hearing, nothing else. Jeanie, call the roll.
Mr. Carrubus.
Yes.
Mr. Razak.
Aye.
Ms. Peel.
Aye.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next action item is the approval of amended 2019-2020 school calendar. I need a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the amended 2019-2020 school calendar.
You have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. I think Dr. Sullivan's going to help us through this.
I'm going to try to help you through this. So, a reminder, yes, you have already approved a 19-20 school calendar. If you'll remember so little history, we had sent you a proposed calendar between that time and the time we were going to bring it to the Board for Action. The state realized that during the writing of the evidence-based funding legislation that they struck out a whole section of the school code that had to do with the instructional day. And because of some of the particulars in what was there, we had to go back and refashion our school calendar. We had to put in some half-days in order to comply with, you know, the way the state was interpreting the law then. Our legislators decided that they didn't like or had no intention of erasing that part of the school code, and essentially have gone back and just replaced it again. The only thing that they've added that's really different are some exceptions to the five-hour instructional day, which are really related to some things like student internships and dual-credit kinds of opportunities and some things like that. And they've also now added the ability of school districts to use e-learning days on emergency days, which we are going to talk to you about in August. So, we're bringing the amended school calendar back to you because we were taking out those dreaded half-days of attendance that no one likes. And I actually, prior to even starting work on this, we went or talked to both of the parent groups, our PTA presidents and our IPPC, and they were all in full agreement. No one likes those half-days. So, what we've really done is not changed any of the major dates. First day of school is the same as it was, our winter break, spring break, all those are the same. What really changed are those half-days that were converted into SIP days and maybe moved into just a couple places. So, there weren't major changes. The legislation was passed on June 7th, the governor signed it on June 7th and became effective July 1st. So, this is our first opportunity to amend it, and so we ask for you to do that so that we can communicate this to our parents as quickly as possible.
Questions or comments? Hearing none. I'm glad we got rid of those half-days. They're not beneficial for students in terms of staff development. It makes staff development very difficult. And so, this is a big, big plus, so thanks.
As well as being difficult sometimes for parents as well. Yeah, half-days are not easy for anybody, I don't think.
Yes, absolutely.
Attendance is bad on those days.
So, this is a big plus. Hearing no other questions. Jeanie, call the roll.
Mr. Carrubus.
Yes.
Mr. Razak.
Aye.
Ms. Peel.
Aye.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
We now go to our discussion item, the ever-popular Mr. Strang.
Thank you, Mr. President. I feel a little pressure. I don't think I've ever been up here before 7:30.
You've got five minutes.
And I'm usually fast, but now I feel like staring at me over here. That's right. Good evening, board members. This is our draft budget, and as you remember, we've started putting together a forecast in January, and we're getting to the point now where we're starting to really pull this together. I don't expect a lot of changes between this draft budget and the tentative budget, which you'll hopefully approve in August. The one outstanding item that we really need to work toward is what we're getting in from the state of Illinois in evidence-based funding. Tonight, there's no action required from all of you. It's just an opportunity for you to see it, ask some questions, email me some questions, and give me some things to think about between now and when we start to put together the tentative budget. The tentative budget, in August, we will ask for your approval on, and that's something that we will put on display then for 30 days prior to final approval in September. Tonight, we'll go over District Goal 3, which is to receive recognition from the state of Illinois. We'll talk about some of the pressures and opportunities for the state of Illinois and the district. We'll go over the operating and non-operating, and just summarize again where we're going to go from here. District Goal 3 is to manage resources efficiently and effectively, and by June 30th of each year, for the district to receive financial profile designation of recognition. We absolutely anticipate receiving recognition for fiscal year 2019, and what you'll find in this draft budget is that we'll expect to receive recognition in fiscal year 20 as well. When I was researching how some of the districts were doing on their new evidence-based funding, Illinois State Board of Education had this very interesting graph where you can see the Tier 1 districts, the Tier 2, Tier 3, and Tier 4 districts. And what immediately popped out to me is the Tier 3 districts that are between 90% and 100% funded for implementing all of the elements, and Tier 4 districts that are over 100% funded to implement all of those. You've got a couple of districts that are in early warning, which is shocking that something like that would happen with those districts. And I think when I find some time, I'm going to dig around and try and figure out who that is, just out of curiosity. You would expect that in Tier 1 and in Tier 2, that some of the districts that are trying to implement those elements and are dealing with financial pressures would be in early warning, and certainly some that are in watch. The watch districts are usually taken over by Illinois State Board of Education, and they have to go through some additional hoops to get them back on track. We are in recognition, and we expect to be in recognition for fiscal year 20 as well. Some of the pressures on the state of Illinois, there's still an unfunded pension liability in the five systems of $133 billion, which is substantial. There's outstanding bills that are in a backlog. Currently, it's at $8.8 billion, and it's down from $16.7 billion in fiscal year 17. So, the state is, they're digging their way out of that hole. And that, you know, I guess it's a pressure, but it's also can be viewed as a positive. The general obligation bonds ratings have been downgraded 15 times since 2010. So, if the state wants to go out for any loans, it's going to be expensive. And then finally, Moody's Analytics forecast the possibility of a recession in the mid-2020s, and that Illinois is in one of the worst states to be prepared for that. So, if there is an economic recession in the next half-decade, Illinois is going to be in a position of really struggling again. And I can only imagine that they'll start to cut funding for education, both K-12, pre-K-12, and higher education. Some of the opportunities, for the first time in quite a while, the state of Illinois, it seems like the General Assembly, the governor, and the Illinois State Board of Education are having some dialogues and moving some things forward, whether you're for or against them. It seems like the fighting has stopped for the while, and they're trying to get some things moving in a direction. A progressive income tax is a possibility, and that'll go to the voters in November. And the estimates, if that passes, will be $2.4 billion to $3.4 billion of new revenue. Presently, 32 states have a progressive income tax. A total of nine states, including Illinois, have a flat income tax, and seven states have no income tax at all. Now, those are typically the states that retired teachers move to. January 1st, recreational cannabis will be legalized, and they're expecting $170 million in new revenue in just this year. So, in a half a year, $170 million in new revenues, pretty significant. It'll be interesting. Some of the board members asked me, you know, how much money we would think that we would receive as a school district from all of these possibilities. You know, I'm optimistic but pretty conservative, and my hope is that they continue to pay down the debt and that they just give us what they've promised us and don't prorate and don't stop funding, evidence-based funding. The other opportunities that are out there is there's some discussion about expanding the service taxes. And if it was a 5% service tax, and we taxed at the same levels as our surrounding states, you can see that we would receive an additional amount of money. Iowa actually has 81 service taxes more than we do. And at 5%, it would generate, on the conservative side, $1.2 billion, and up to $2.9 billion for Illinois. Wisconsin has 14 service taxes more than the state of Illinois, and that would generate between $588 million and $953 million. And then Missouri, Indiana, and Kentucky have 11, 8, and 6 additional service taxes. And you can see there how much additional money that would generate. So, that is another possible revenue stream for the state of Illinois. There's been a bipartisan balanced budget. Now, I think all of those things need to come to fruition, or a number of those things need to come to fruition for this budget to actually be balanced at the end of the year. But there seems to be a real effort at the state of Illinois to get some things rolling, and this hasn't happened in quite some time. So, it just seems positive to me. They increased evidence-based funding from $350 million to $375 million, so that that's an additional $25 million. So, I'm hoping that we receive some more money from the state. 89% of the tier funding, the additional money, went to Tier 1 schools in the first and second year of evidence-based funding. So, those Tier 1 schools need to start to fill up, and those buckets need to be fuller for us to receive some more money. But if we received $700,000 in the first year of evidence-based funding, and $800,000 in the second year of evidence-based funding, and this draft budget is showing we're going to receive exactly what we received last year, I think it's safe to say that with $25 million, we may receive $300,000 or $400,000 more than we actually have in this budget. So, I hope that happens. Early childhood was increased by $50 million, and mandated categoricals by $47 million. So, those are both positives from the state of Illinois. Pressures for the school district. There's still always this talk about property tax freeze, and I think of some of those items occur at the state level where all those additional revenues go down to the state, whether it's a progressive tax, or recreational marijuana use, or service taxes. The state's going to, if I put on my hat, my Karnak hat, the state's going to feel some pressure to relieve some pressure at the local level, and that would be through some type of property tax freeze. The downside for that is that's our most reliable source of income, and what would likely happen is that the money would go down to Springfield, and it would be allocated, and it would be allocated across the state. And I think, you know, I don't think 100% of the money that came from our community down to the state of Illinois would come back to us. We'd receive a smaller percentage of money back because the need that's occurring in central and southern Illinois and some of the less wealthy Coller County school districts. So, that's a struggle. We're also seeing, as a pressure for us, is a growing transportation cost. And you've seen some memos from Ron Johnson, Director of Support Services, about our five-year contract coming to an end with first student, and we're going to have an opportunity to negotiate a one-year extension or go out for another five-year contract. And because the economy's better, they just can't afford drivers anymore. Folks are going to over-the-road or trucking and paying more. So, to keep drivers, the cost is going up, and we've seen increases in transportation contracts in some of the Coller Counties as high as 30%. Finally, tax increment financing. If TIFs occur in our district because we are so residential and so locally supported by taxes, that could be a pressure as well. And I've got a graph that I'll show you in a few minutes that kind of speaks to how TIFs could impact this district moving forward. Opportunities, evidence-based funding has really helped us out. The first positive to evidence-based funding was that they gave us that hold harmless of fiscal year 17, which immediately was an additional $3 million. Then, on top of it, they gave us the $700,000 of tier money. So, that was a nice gain. The next year, we received that hold harmless, that $700,000, and additional $800,000. So, now, in the third year, we've got enough money that we can start to do some things in the area of implementing some of those elements. So, we've hired 17 additional elementary teachers to work with larger classes and at-risk populations. We've hired six new instructional coaches, 1.5 additional elementary mental health staff, and three new high school mental health coordinators. So, those are all evidence-based funding elements that we are starting to implement, as you would expect. In addition to that, with the additional revenue, we've gone from an average of $3 million in operations and maintenance capital outlay to, in this draft budget, $9.4 million. So, when Dr. Sullivan said that Mr. DePaul is busy, he's got a lot of projects going on. I've actually taken some time to drive around the district with him, and I've driven around on my own just to see all of the projects. There's a lot getting done, and that's a very positive thing for our school district.
And something Engage 204 wanted us to do.
Yes. Yes, you're absolutely right, Mr. Razak. You know, at the present time, I just flipped back to the slide, the range of where folks are funded, so you can get a sense of still the inadequacies of the school district. The lowest is that there's a school district in the state that's only 47% funded by evidence-based funding, and there's actually a school district that's 280%. funding and there's actually a school district that's 280% funded. So, there's quite a gap. I mentioned that 89% of the funding still go into tier-one districts and that 81% of the students in the state of Illinois are in districts where adequacy is less than 90%. And as you know, we are at 79% in our school district. So, we're a tier-two district and if, if this continues, you know, in, in the hopefully near future, in the next three or four years, we will see more funding because, you know, tier-one districts are coming up. I'll be interested to see how House Bill 7, or 2078, which increases the minimum teacher salary, impacts evidence-based funding because those central and southern Illinois states is, as they start to raise their teacher salaries, their range from adequacy is gonna go down. So, they're actually gonna have to give more money to them. And so, it's, in, in some strange respects, it's gonna delay us getting that tier money. So, that'll be, that'll be something to watch. On, on this slide, this line graph, what's interesting is I put all of the DuPage County school districts in there and it's the EAV per pupil, which is the property value in their school district divided by the number of students who attend that school, their average daily attendance. And what you can see is, you can see the West Chicago Elementary School District has $162,058 of property wealth per student. And if you look at the end, Butler School District has $1,691,757 of property value per student. And there in the yellow is Indian Prairie School District, $189,266 of property value. So, per student, we're not as well off as, as we really, you would think and certainly not as well off as other DuPage County schools. And when you, you think of Indian Prairie School District at $189,266, if a major TIF was to occur in, in our school district and it was a residential TIF and we received 500 students from it but didn't receive any of the property value increase because of the TIF, we would actually drop on this chart. And there would be a point in time where we potentially could be EAV per pupil, the lowest in the state because we're really not that far from West Chicago now. So, it, that will impact our property value per student. The other thing that you can see is that in the purple, we have four school districts that are not DuPage County school districts, but those are, are four comparable districts that are outside the counties. You've got Batavia, Geneva, St. Charles, and Burlington up in...
Barrington.
Barrington, excuse me, up in Lake County. And all of them have more property value per student than we do. They are, with the exception of, they are all tier-three and tier-four school districts. And in the red are our three comparable districts that are in DuPage County, Wheaton 200, Naperville, and Elmhurst. And those school districts are also all tier-three and tier-four school districts. So, we are the only tier-two school district out of our comparables. But, that's, you know, it's a, it's a pretty good indicator, you know, of how TIFs could possibly impact us as a school district. The other thing that I wanted to point out is I, I just wanted to pull up three of the major funds, the education fund, the operations and maintenance fund, and the transportation fund, and just give you a big picture of kind of how the revenue comes into those funds and how the expenditures go out. The education fund is our most diverse fund when it comes to revenue sources. You've got property taxes, you've got other local revenue, which are our fees, our athletic fees, lunch receipts. You've got evidence-based funding, other state funding, which is now the categoricals, and you've got our federal funding. The federal funding goes specifically to certain line items and they go out specifically as, as very specific expenditures. And our budget allocation is, you know, predominantly salary and benefits. We're people business. The, the more people you have, the more expensive it is. Purchased services in that line item is our food service. So, 5% of that is our food service contract. If that wasn't there and we brought those folks in-house, our salaries and benefits would be larger. Supplies and materials, other objects, which are our fees, our judgments, dues to memberships, transportation, which is to conferences and things like that, and then non-capital equipment, which is all the purchases that are under $5,000. So, you can see that that money's predominantly in salary and benefits. Fund 20, operations and maintenance, revenue and expenditures, which you can see is that it's predominantly revenues, property taxes. And our other local revenue, which is 4% is our building rentals. So, we receive some money from building rentals. And then on the expenditure side, you can see purchased services, which is our Aramark facilities and maintenance contract. Supplies and materials, which are the, you know, the chemicals that we use and the lawn treating stuff that we use, the gasoline to fill the mowers. Capital outlay, which is for the most part now our bricks and mortar, our roofs, and salaries, which are our staff who support, our district staff who oversee and support operations and maintenance. And Fund 40, you can see you have property taxes, other local revenue, and other state revenue. The other local revenue are charters. That's our field trips, when we charge kids to go to field trips or if there's a, a trip downtown to a big concert or whatever, then we, we charge, you know, $6 for every student to, you know, go to that trip. The other state revenue are grants and that's in the rear. So, the grant application that we submitted this year will be paid out next year. So, that's what, what that is. Our purchased services is entirely our First Student contract. And then our salaries and benefits are for our staff and there's three of them who oversee the transportation program. On the draft budget, the first thing you'll see is that our beginning fund balance is at $111,483,634. Our education fund is our largest and will always be our largest because that's where the, the brunt of our money goes and that's where the brunt of our staff are at. They're the ones who are serving our schools. They're the administrators up here focused on education. It's the principals and assistant principals, staff members and, and support staff who are focused on educating our students. Our total projected revenue is $356,919,000. I anticipate that that's where we'll see one change is in our state sources. Hopefully, because of the extra $25 million, we see that go up slightly from where I've got this draft budget. Total projected expenditures, $356,135,881. What, what I want to highlight is that in operations and maintenance and in transportation, you can see that we are running a slight deficit in operations and maintenance of $390,000 and in transportation of $414,000. So, the ending projected fund balance in those is actually gonna drop and, and that's okay because over the, when the great recession was hitting, we were getting topped out in our education fund and to levy to our aggregate max, we needed to levy more money into operations and maintenance and into transportation. And then we were loaning that in April over to the education fund. Well, because the economy's better, property values are going up, we are not at that $4 rate, or as close to that $4 rate in education anymore. So, we can, we can actually levy into education what we now, now need to and we don't have to loan that money. And it was like a two-week loan every year, Board of Education members, you would approve that and then when our taxes would come in, we would move that loan back. But, because the economy's better, we don't have to do that, which is a great thing. So, now we have the opportunity to spend down some of the fund balances in operations and maintenance and in transportation and, and move it over into the education fund. And then finally, we're at 31.52% of fund balance to revenue ratio. So, that's, boy, that's been so consistent over the years and I, I really don't expect that to change at all. The other thing that I want to point out is that in operations and maintenance, midway through that second column, you can see the capital outlays at $6.4 million. So, Mr. DePaul's gonna spend $6.4 million of his $9.4 million in Fund 20. And on this next page, I'll point out where he's spending the additional $3 million out of Fund 60. In the first column, our debt services, we're starting with a fund balance of $10,876,476. We will be levying $27,494,538 this December to pay for our buildings. Our buildings will be paid off in 2027, so we're nearing that date. Seven years away, we will be done levying to pay for our schools, for the construction of our schools. You can see that we've got a principal and interest payment and we're having a projected excess of $813. So, at the end of the day, we'll have $11,683 and $730. Seven years from now, any of that ending projected fund balance will, will reduce levy in that final year to pay off all of our schools. So, that's what'll happen there. In our capital projects fund, you can see we've got $18,154,130. And from local sources, we're projecting $808,906 in impact fees from developers. That's probably a little light. It'll probably be closer to a million and a half with all of the construction that's going on throughout the district. When you look down at capital outlay, you can see the additional $3 million that Mr. DePaul's gonna be spending on projects throughout the school. So, between Fund 20 and that $3 million in Fund 60, that's where you get the $9.4 million. Farther down below, you can see, see land sale proceeds of $3,525,000. We actually closed this Thursday at 9:00 in the morning on the second half of the 25 acres. And that's about six months earlier than we expected. So, MI Homes is developing that, the, the construction's going along well enough that they wanna obtain that land earlier and start working this summer and fall on it. So, that's, it's a huge perk. That'll be out from under us and behind us and we can move forward. So, altogether, we're gonna have a $29,024,606 beginning fund balance. We'll be paying for our schools, for the payment of our schools. We'll be paying $3 million out of capital outlay. We've got the principal and interest payments on our, on our buildings and we'll have $31,171,766 in ending fund balance when fiscal year 20 is over for our school district. The audit has started and the audit has, will be going on and depending upon how much money is additional this year, any excess, the board authorized us to move up to $7 million from Fund 20 at, from this fiscal year into Fund 60. So, that will be additional money going forward to pay for the renovation and fixes of our schools. And as you all know, through the recession, our schools were the first place, our buildings and our infrastructure was the first place where we really made reductions to balance our budget. And there's, there was, there's some wear and tear and some real need. There's some tuck pointing in roofs and asphalt that really needs to be taken care of. And so, Mr. DePaul is, is busy in a good way.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, the operation and maintenance budget is consistent with what we did for this past current year? Past then?
Yes.
Doesn't make sense. 2018, 2019?
The last two years, we've, last year and then this upcoming budget, we've been able to allocate more towards capital outlay.
So, the $9.4 million is about the same from la, this past year?
The, you know, the upside, and I, I just need to point this out and I, and thank the board for this, the upside about being able to transfer that money into Fund 60 is it gives Todd the opportunity to complete that construction and those activities in July and August and not impact our operating budget. Prior to that, he had to really try and work to get those expenses done before June 30th to make it hit that budget. So, it gives him more flexibility to get those projects done through the entire spring and summer before school starts. Finally, on the last slide, we'll continue to develop the fiscal year 20 budget. I don't anticipate that on August 12th, that we'll know from the state of Illinois how evidence-based funding's all gonna fall out. The way evidence-based funding works is, you know, is it's, it's not just how we look as, as a school district, what our personality is, it's how our personality is compared to all the other districts in the state of Illinois. So, it's a little bit more work from this ISB, the Illinois State Board of Education, to calculate exactly where everyone's gonna be at. And I think it's probably gonna be between August and the actual budget hearing when that occurs. And I'll just update you all on that in a memo as soon as I'm aware of it and, and so you're aware of the appropriate changes. But, we'll put the tentative budget on August 12th and we'll ask you all to approve that at that time. We'll put it on display and at the September 23rd Board of Education meeting, we'll have the budget hearing and final approval. And, and as I mentioned, we've got the audit going on. That's going well and we don't anticipate any issues with that and we should have that for you in December as we typically do. And with that, I'll take any questions.
I have a few and please forgive me if these have been asked. You had mentioned the, the service tax that you said 1.2 to 2.9. Was that Illinois or was that Iowa that you had brought? I think it was slide five. Did you say that was what we anticipated, Illinois anticipates getting revenue?
There we go.
If we did what Iowa does.
Yeah. The Commission on Government Forecasting and Accountability ran...
I, I follow you.
You got it?
Yeah. Sorry. Took me a second. Sorry, I've been driving all day long. Manded categoricals, right below that, that 47 million, is that additional or is that,
That's an increase.
That's an increase, 47.
It's an increase.
So, I, I know a lot of, well, I mean, mostly mandated categorical money goes towards outside tuition or transportation. So, is that gonna be allocated to districts who are, again, struggling? I mean, is that gonna go to tier-one first or is, how is that gonna, do you know?
That's, that's, that's separate from the evidence-based funding tier money. That is really dependent upon your expenses. So, we had a substantial increase in our transportation funding. We had a 7% and then a 9% these last two years. And those increases in expenses because of the shortage in drivers, you know, we need to make sure, and this is something we really focused on this year, is that when we anticipate fiscal year 20, receiving money from the state in our grant, it's based on last year. So, you've gotta anticipate that it's gonna go up by that 9% because our, our costs went up by that 9%. And if we didn't adjust for that, we would show a, a larger excess in money because we received more in our categorical than we actually did. So, that $47 million is probably gonna come to all of us because we're all seeing that increase in transportation costs. Can I also say that I'm hoping that we received one categorical payment from, from last year and three from this year? A number of categoricals were, were rolled into evidence-based funding, but there's still a small amount that are left out. We still have a categorical payment that is due that ISB has released to the comp controller and the comp controller needs to get in line with the rest of the unpaid bills. And if it comes due between, before August 30th, that would be a fifth categorical payment that would come to us this year. That happened once about six years ago. We received five categoricals.
That was a good year. Yeah.
That's how we started air conditioning.
Do you know, have they, has ISB or legislators calculated what that teacher salary increase is going to essentially cost all of us, right? Because it's essentially hitting a reset button on the tier funding. You know, because it's moving all those primarily downstate districts who weren't at a minimum $40,000 teacher salary. It's, it's now going to, which is ironic because the evidence-based funding wasn't supposed to go towards teacher salaries. But, there was no, you know, rules against that, but it was a slap on the hand. But, essentially, this resets everything. Do we, was it ever looked at or calculated? Did anybody do any calculation, you know?
Not that I'm aware of.
In, in the business officials world of what that would cost? Cause I gotta imagine that's gonna be pretty significant.
Not that I'm aware of.
So, okay, well, I'll stop asking questions. I can ask you privately. That's, that's... That's, that's all I got.
Other comments, questions? Mr. Krugus?
Yeah, on page six, yeah, it's titled, "Pressures and Opportunities." I don't see pension cost shift here. Is that because you wanted to be brief? Or is that because it's no longer a concern?
I think a little bit of both. I, I, they've talked about pension cost shift for quite some time. I'm hoping with the implementation of some of their other elements, their revenue sources, that's something that they don't consider, but that is a possibility and a potential pressure too.
The current, one of the big advocacy groups, Stanford Children, is actually calling for the pension cost shift to be moved into the evidence-based formula. And so that's the current proposal that is being bandied about. So it wouldn't surprise me if that doesn't go through some, you know, numerous iterations.
So that'll push us to a tier one then, or?
Well, you know, it would supposedly, according to them, impact the, the higher tiers more than it would impact the lower tiers, just because they tend to gain more from the current pension shift to the state versus the district. But I think that's the discussion. I think eventually they'll look at, how do we shift this?
Yeah, they want to bake it into evidence-based funding.
And my guess is it's going to take some time.
Yeah.
Because I was at that presentation and.
It didn't go well?
It didn't go so well.
Well, but, but then that leads to, because there was actually a bill on the table this, this year for a property tax freeze. And, and again, that would reset all the evidence-based funding too, because everybody essentially would lose money. It's actually ironic because the actual, the, the, the districts that are tier, tier one districts would actually, well, they are very high tax districts, but since the majority of their funding comes from the state, they wouldn't be as largely impacted by a property tax freeze as essentially two-tier, tier-two districts who would have the biggest hit. Because tier three and tier four, they've got more additional money. So that's going to, yeah, okay, sorry.
Mr. Krugus, I'm going to return to you.
Yeah, so page twelve, non-operating funds. We have a land sale proceeds, three point five million approximately. That's a private developer, developing in our district, building houses, building roads. No tax increment financing involved in that, correct?
That's correct.
So we've got, we're a district that attracts development, tries to improve the area, and does so without further assistance from governmental bodies.
Absolutely right. I have six developments that I'm in different stages of collecting information on and will give you board updates on that are exactly the same. One will be this week on a development that is very much like this one, and there's no TIF involved in it.
So we, we're not having, we're not in a situation where we're having a problem attracting development.
Not at all.
Looking at a global district-wide, we're not looking at individual parcels, but it, it seems to me that when you were talking about some of how the tax increment financing would negatively impact our district, it's good to see that we are still a place where economic development is happening, and we should still continue to make sure that it happens in a way that benefits the schools. Where does impact fees show up on this budget?
It's the other local sources, the eight hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and six dollars.
And we're, we're running a fund balance of approximately nineteen million. Why do we choose to do that rather than allow Mr. DePaul to spend nineteen million dollars on capital outlays?
He doesn't have the manpower to get all of that work done in, in five years.
In eight weeks, he can do it.
Yeah.
Or the contractors.
Yeah, or the contractors. When, when we really start gearing up and we've got multiple roofs going on, we, and thankfully, Mr. DePaul's able to get his bids out in December and January, and he beats a lot of the neighboring districts, so he gets the better contractors at a more competitive scenario because they're all want that work. If we were to do that in March or April, you're down to two or three contractors, and the ones that know us the best might not be available, and it's not quite as competitive because there's not as many bidding on the work.
So it's not just having the cash on hand to get the job done, it's having, there's other limiting factors, the time, the, the contractors. We've got, it's not just, you can write a check and the carpets get replaced or the.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
I have.
Ms. Krugus, go ahead.
Just a quick question. With the money we got from the evidence-based funding, we were able to put one more mental health staff in every elementary school?
Yeah.
No.
Oh, okay.
We put, let me go back to that slide.
We were able to add one point five additional to.
Elementary.
The elementary total, but we do have one, we have at least one full-time.
In ele.
In every elementary, but we were able to increase where we needed it.
Thanks.
But also the high school.
Yeah, and one at each high school, a new position at each high school.
So on chart three, you said eighty-nine percent of the evidence-based funding went to tier one this past year. So is there a view of how many of those tier one schools maybe got nudged into tier two?
I, I can probably find that information. I don't have it off the top of my head.
Like, yeah, I mean, I would hope a bunch.
Not enough.
Not enough, okay. I'm trying to be hopeful here.
I know.
Which ironically, only initially, fifty percent was supposed to go to tier one, but they.
Yeah, I mean, it would be interesting to know, like, how much that's really helping them get out of the hole that they're in.
The, the initial plan was to have everyone fully funded in ten years, which would take six hundred million dollars at.
A year.
A year at that, at that year's rate. You know, with CPI continuing to increase, it's going to be much, probably be six hundred and fifty million dollars a year over ten years. So with three hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty, three seventy-five, if they stay in that ballpark, it'll be twenty years before everybody is fully funded. You know, our hope is to get tier ones funded and start working on tier twos. Honestly, I'm, I'm not worried about tier threes or tier fours at all.
Well, other than they have too much money. And it sounds like a few of them don't know how to manage it correctly. But, all right. And then I loved your chart seven. I thought that was just a very excellent way of telling the story about how impactful TIFs could be in our district and where we're situated, because that, that's just continued to be a mystery to people, like, you know, this is like shocking when they see where our district lines up next to, to all these other ones and what kind of impact creating a TIF could cause with us being in the position we're in already.
Our EAV, thank you for pointing that out. Our EAV per pupil is actually less than the state average.
Yeah. So, yeah, thanks. I love that chart.
I just wanted to make mention on, President Rezak mentioned that on the pressures and opportunities chart slide, the operations and maintenance capital that we've been able to increase, as well as, I remember Grover mentioned, the elementary mental health staff increase. But just as President Rezak, President Rezak mentioned, from Engage two oh four, we've, some of the concerns were additional staffing, and so we've been able to, to see seventeen. We've been able to use what we've received for additional staff has occurred. So that's a, that's a positive as well as, you know, as far as us listening to what the concerns were from our Engage two oh four. And then I just had a quick question, and it's probably, it's, I'm certain it's very minimal, but on the transportation side, are we able to do any credit with this particular tax increase, you know, on gasoline? Are we able to do, what, what is that going to represent to us? And are we able to do any type of credit, you know, as a, as a non, as a school system? What, what's that going to mean to us?
No, we, part of our bid is, is the cost of the gasoline to transport those students. From, from my understanding is the increase in the fuel tax is really going to fund all of the infrastructure.
Right.
Right.
So, you know, if that happens and they really want to fund the K-12, we, I think we have thirty-nine million dollars in grant that's left over from two thousand and five. Is, is that it, Todd? Construction grant?
Yeah.
So if we, if we got that, any money for that construction grant, that would be wonderful.
And I, I was really thinking from, on the expense side, what's that going to mean to us from, did we have any idea of what that increase is going to mean to us on the expense side? And I, and I wondered whether we're able to do any credit, request any credit on that, from that tax increase or not.
I can look into that. I, I don't know what the cost will be associated with that. Part of our problem when it comes to our transportation contract and bidding it out is that we're incredibly large, and there's only a few transportation vendors out there, providers, who could handle us. We're also fairly landlocked, so they've got to find a spot to house all of their, their fleet of buses. And, you know, they're not, they're not sitting with three hundred buses waiting for a contract. So they want, bid for us, they've got to decide they want to take that on. So, you know, what we may do is we may split the district out and have two different contracts so that we're a little bit more manageable. Now, it's a little more work and oversight on our part, but I think when you've got a situation where you're seeing the increases we've got like, like this, you've got to try some of those things.
You mentioned a grant from two thousand and five.
Yes.
We have, we have an outstanding grant from two thousand and five.
Correct. Was it two thousand and five?
Two thousand and six.
Six.
Some of those are outstanding. You're paying, there's some.
They paid through two thousand and four, a portion of two thousand and four.
I can't, I can't wrap my head around that. We applied for money in two thousand and five, and it's fifteen years later? And there's a possibility that that might pay out?
They, 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 we were surveyed six weeks ago about if the state came up with additional money, what would you, what would you do with it? We listed all of our capital needs. In addition to that, we said we would like our grant to be paid out from fifteen years ago.
Did Oswego just get theirs?
No, not all of it.
They got a portion?
They got, they did get some, yes.
They're paying grants that were submitted after ours?
No, I think they were in the loop with us. I think they were ahead of us. But I also, they're also talking about throwing everybody out that was on the list.
Right.
And starting new.
Sure.
So.
There's folks who had construction grants from two thousand and two and two thousand and three and two thousand and eight. So it's kind of wait your turn.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you so much.
That was longer than five minutes.
Yeah. Wow.
I will try to be shorter than Jay. You will notice that we have a new agenda item. That agenda item will show up at every meeting from here on out. That's because we met on June first, and then June first, the board works with the administration to develop district goals. It also works together to develop Board of Education goals and district goals. And one of those things we talked about was to focus on legislative advocacy. Clearly, the last couple of years, when the legislators, legislators are in session, things come fast and furious, and at times, we need to educate our public in terms of what's going on, because at times, like last year with the physical education bill, which would have had big implications for us, we needed to ask the community to assist us and get the story out. So since it's July and they're not in session, we have little to share, but I met with Superintendent Sullivan, and she's meeting with the legislator.
Well, I just wanted to share that Senator Bertino-Tarrant is hosting an education roundtable for education leaders in the area to discuss next steps for K-12 education. So she has two meetings, one in Joliet and one down in Springfield. So I'll be at the Joliet meeting, and I've already submitted some of the topics, which are some of the things you've already, you just mentioned, that, you know, we think the physical education bill will resurrect. And actually, I did put capital, the capital grants on there to talk with her about as well as some, some other issues. But very much appreciate her, you know, trying to get input from the field about what, you know, is important to us. So just want to give a little bit of a shout out to her for, for doing this.
And hopefully, because I know Senator Menard had a part of, you know, one of the, in discussing of the progressive income tax, there was also the property tax freeze that Senator Menard put out there. So I hope if that comes up, you'll let her know how much that will impact us. So, thanks.
When's the meeting? At the end of August, August twenty-ninth.
Anybody else with legislation?
How do you want to handle it going forward if there's an issue? Obviously, if it's something that's pressing in our community and needs to be addressed, I'm sure you will put that as part of that agenda item or discussion item. If there's something the board wants to discuss under the legislative advocacy update, should we just submit that to you then for future meetings?
Sure.
Okay.
And generally, we post our meetings on Friday, so that would be good to post if, if we can. Something comes up on an emergency basis, I think we still can discuss that, but we can do both. We can, you know, have it as a specific item to discuss, or if an emergency occurs, discuss it as a, as soon as we can. Last but not least, the Board of Education update. As I mentioned, we did meet on June first. We adopted Board of Education goals.
They're posted?
They're posted on the website. Most important is, we're not happy that Dr. Sullivan will be leaving us at the end of June of 2020, but the districts, the board is in the process of working with Rain Associates. And of course, our bold, board goal number one will be to hire a superintendent. And we maintain goals of being an efficient and effective governing board, and basically what that means is we try to achieve the school governance award recognition. That's going to be due again in 2020, and there are many objectives that go under that in order for us to receive that award. We still trying to maintain and work on our equity policy, whether that's a policy or a statement. So we're still ongoing with that, and our fourth goal is to focus on legislative advocacy. The board also works on, on an agreed upon norms, and we reaffirmed our norms in terms of how we conduct meetings and how we work with the administration. So we had a very productive meeting on June first. Both district goals and board goals are now posted, so if the community wants to look at them, they're up there. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Yes. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Yep.
All right.
Bye.